Planning Commission Agenda, or this Planning Commission to order this day of May 16th in this council chambers. And Mr. Secretary, would you please recall the roll?
Yes, thank you Chairman Lusk. Commissioner Hemmings?
Here.
Commissioner Valenzano?
Present.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Vice Chair Edsel?
Here.
Chairman Lusk?
Here. Mr. Edsel, would you listen to the flag?
Yes, please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Before we start, I would like to mention that if you would like to speak, we would appreciate if you'd fill out one of those blue cards, those blue slips, then we have complete information to contact you if there's any more information or answers to questions and things. It's this time for members of the public that are present that have some matter that is not part of the Planning Commission's agenda. If you have something you'd like to present to us, this would be the time. Seeing no one raising their hands? Oh, I skipped right over two minutes, four minutes, I think. First would be the regular meeting of April 4th.
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes as submitted in our packet.
I'll second that motion.
Move by Mr. Edsel, seconded by Mr. Hemmings, please vote. All four in favor, one abstention. We now have the special meeting of April 12th.
And also move that those minutes be approved as submitted in our packet.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Valenzano?
Please vote. All right, it carries five to nothing.
Just for a point of order, should the two that were absent be abstaining from that, Mr. Lusk and Mr. Edsel?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
We're approving the minutes of a meeting that two members weren't at, so should it?
Oh.
I would actually ask that we retake that roll call so the two members that were not at that meeting can abstain from it.
All right, we'll do it again. Regular meeting of April 4th, moved and seconded, please vote. I'm not sure if I was, I must have been meeting.
It looks like April 12th, right? It says absent Chairman Lusk and Vice Chairman Edsel.
Yeah, so they have been abstaining. We're good.
Thank you, sir.
And you had a question about April 12th?
That was it, sir.
That was the meeting.
Minutes.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
We've got to take that one again, too.
I think we're good, Mr. Chairman.
You're okay?
Yes, sir.
It's always nice to be okay. Next on the agenda is item number six, which is the Oakmont Senior Living and his RPD 100.
And Mr. Chairman, before we start that, I just want an interest of disclosure that I have an adult daughter that lives on Fountain Street, and just disclose I don't have any financial interest in the property at all, and I haven't discussed it with her, and I feel I can be impartial, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I just need to disclose that I did take a tour of the property, and also took a tour of three of the other four assisted living facilities in Camarillo.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Now, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you Chairman Lusk. Mr. Torres will be presenting this item tonight.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, an application has been received from Oakmont Senior Living and EJM Development Corporation requesting approval of a residential plan development permit known as RPD 200. The application proposes the development of approximately 87,287 square foot senior assisted living facility consisting of 85 units and 93 beds. The subject site was previously analyzed as part of Village of the Park specific plan, EIR. Additionally, an initial study was conducted to evaluate the potential effects of the proposed assisted living facility upon the environment. Based on the analysis in the initial study, it was determined that the proposed project could not have a significant effect on the environment, and a declaration was prepared. The project's narrative declaration was circulated for 20-day review period in accordance with CEQA in City of Camarillo environmental guidelines. A combined notice of intent to adopt a narrative declaration in public hearing was being advertised for the Planning Commission meeting on May 16, 2017, which with notices mailed to all property owners within 300 feet, rated as the subject site, the property owners of Wickford Town Homes, the Village of the Park Homeowners Association, posted at the Camarillo City Hall, and as well on the city's website, and published in the newspaper of general circulation within the area. The project site consists of 3.12 acres located in the southwest corner of Village of the Park Drive and Davenport Street. The site is zoned residential plan development by dwelling units per acre maximum, RPD 5U. The subject site is rectangular and is bacon covering weeds and grasses. The project site is surrounded by single-family residential properties to the south and west and east, designated for lower residential development and zone RPD 5U. An elementary school to the north designated for public land use in the RPD zone. The Wickford Town Homes are located in the northwest of the property in the RPD 25U. This is just a picture of the proposed site, which is currently bacon, and is looking, the picture was taken from the southeast corner of the property looking northwest. The proposed building has been designed to orient easterly facing the Davenport Street with a portico chair at the main entry of the building. The proposed building is shaped like an H with an outdoor landscaping, garden-shaped gardens, shade arbers, and an outdoor dining patio on the westerly side of the building. The trash enclosure to serve the building will be located in the northwest corner of the building. The main access to the project site will be provided by a circular driveway on Davenport Street and directs traffic on the main entrance of the building. A pickup and drop-off area will be provided on the main entrance underneath of a portico chair. A second point of ingress will be provided on Village of the Park Drive. Additionally, an emergency driveway access for fire department vehicles will be provided on Fountain Street. The development plan indicates that the proposed assisted living facility will occupy approximately 33% of the 3.12 acre parcel. Pave areas, including the parking lot and hardscaping, will consist of approximately 35% of the parcel. The balance of the parcel will be devoted for landscaping, which represents approximately 31.6% of the project site. In order to ensure compatibility with the surrounding properties and provide adequate separation, the building is designed to provide substantial setbacks from the adjacent single-family residential properties, and exceeds the building setbacks required under the Village of the Park specific plan and the RPD zone. The building provides a 60-foot setback to the westerly propping line from the single-story portion of the building, and an 80-foot setback from the two-story section of the building, as noted on this slide. The building will provide a 20-foot setback from the easterly propping line, 77 feet from the northern propping line, 85 feet from the northeast corner of the property, and 49 inches from the southerly propping line. Exterior amenities that this proposed facility will provide will be an outdoor courtyard area with water fountains, gazebo's pavilions, and landscaping, separate outdoor gardens for memory care residents, and a garden area for planting. The garden area will be located in this area here. Courtyard, this area, and memory care garden area in this area here. The proposed senior assisted living facility proposes 25 of the 85 units for memory care residents. All units within the facility will be licensed by the State of California Department of Social Services as a residential care facility for elderly. The proposed senior assisted living facility rooms will range in size from 425 to 1,192 square feet, and rooms for memory care residents will range in size from 400 to 26 square feet. The proposed senior assisted living facility will include private and common dining rooms, a self-serve cafe room, activity room, an in-house fitness center, a beauty salon, a lounge room, a media room, and a reading and library room. Majority of the care units will be provided on the south portion of the building, in this area, on the first floor. The facility will provide elevators here and here to access the second floor. And there will be a private, I mean, there will be two separate dining rooms, one for the memory care in this area, and one for the rest of the residents in this area. This is the proposed second story, and they will provide, majority of the rooms for the rest of residents will be on the second floor, and they will be providing a media room on this area here. The parking for the assisted living facility will be based on the proposed number of 93 beds and 25 employees on the largest shift. The proposed facility will require a total of 48 parking spaces. The proposed site plan shows a total of 54 parking spaces will be provided, resulting in a surplus of six parking spaces. Therefore, adequate parking is provided for the proposed Oakmont Senior Living facility. The proposed building consists of two-story buildings measuring approximately 25 feet in height, including an architectural tile element of 36 feet in height. The proposed building has been designed in a Spanish colonial style of architecture in keeping with the Village of the Park specific plan design guidelines. The building incorporates various architectural elements, including smooth Santa Barbara plaster finish, recessed windows, tower elements, clay barrel tile mansard roofs, decorative cornices, canvas awnings, and Santa Barbara stone veneer. On this proposed elevation, we can see the use of the Santa Barbara stone veneer. We also see the tower. This tower is going to be 36-foot high. Mansard, the main height of the building on the mansard will be 25-foot high, and you can see shutters, some architectural elements that is included in this elevation, and also decorative awnings, canvas awnings. And as well on this elevation, you can see the use of some colonnades on the front of the building there and here. This is a rendering of the proposed east elevation of the building. This is facing to the Davenport. Again, we can see the portico chair at the center of the building, here. And this is another perspective view of the main entrance of the east elevation of the building, and again shows the portico chair, the decorative pavement entrances, and some of the balconies that are provided on the second floor. This is the proposed south elevation. This is facing Fountain Street, and as well you can see the use of some colonnades, some balconies, decorative awnings, and the use of the Santa Barbara stone. This is the perspective view of the southwest corner of the building. This is looking at the rear, kind of like the rear side of the building. You can see how the second floor is setback further away than, you know, from the propping line, which is, it's about 80 feet from the propping line, and the first floor is 60 This is the proposed north elevation. This is facing Village of the Park Drive. And again, you can see some of the elements that are used on the building, and as well you can see the trash enclosure, which was incorporated as part of the design of the This is a perspective view of the northwest corner of the building, and again, trash enclosure is fully enclosed except for the access gate that is provided on the front. This is the proposed west elevation. This is the one that is facing to the residential properties adjacent to the property, and the center section of the building, which is mainly the two-story portion of the building is roughly about 110 feet away from the propping line. This is just a perspective view of the courtyard west elevation, and this is just to show you the courtyard area with the use of fountains and some shade areas for the residents. This is a bird's eye view looking southeast to the property, and it's just showing the proposed facility and all the surrounding residential uses. The project site is designated for quad-site public land use, is in accordance with the Camarillo General Plan Land Use Map. Consistent with the general plan, the Village of the Park specific plan also designates the property for quad-site public land uses. The proposed assisted living facility is consistent with the quad-site public classification of the general plan because the use is privately owned and operated to serve the public needs for those needing assisted care living and similar in nature and other quad-site public uses that provide a service to the community. The property is zoned RPD 5U, which permits rest, convalescent nursing homes, and homes for the age, such as assisted living facilities, subject to review and approval of a residential plan development permit by the Planning Commission. And on the bottom section of this slide, you can see the definition for homes for the According to the applicant, the number of calls for emergency service at other assisted living facilities they own and operate in California ranges from zero up to eight calls per month. The applicant has indicated that they will have an onsite licensed nurse that is able to make immediate assessment on the conditions of the resident to help reduce the number of emergency calls to the facility. The applicant stated that under non-emergency situations, the facility will use either their own transportation, family or private ambulance services. For emergency situations, a 911 will be called. The use of the lights and sirens are based on the Fire District and Emergency Medical Services, EMS, agency policies, and the type of call. The Fire District operates procedures dictate the use of the emergency lights and sirens, however, in the general direction of the Fire District to minimize the use of sirens and air horns when responding to lessen to the noise impact to the community. In the most responses into the residential neighborhood, the sirens will only be used when entering a neighborhood from the main feeder roads. Inside of the neighborhood, the emergency lights will remain on. After reviewing the proposed project in compliance with the general plan and the Village of the Park specific plan and the RPD 5U zone, provides the following findings for the Planning Commission's review as follows. And I'm going to go ahead, I'm just going to go ahead and abbreviate a little bit of what we have on there. The project will not be injurious or detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare because it's consistent with the Camarillo General Plan, Village of the Park specific plan, and complies with the development standards of the RPD zone. The project has been designated to be compatible with various uses in the zones within the area, and the proposal is to be located because, and the proposal is to be located because the proposed assisted living facility provides substantial setbacks from adjacent residential properties and exceeds the building setbacks as required by the Village of the Park specific plan and the RPD zone. The proposed senior assisted living facility's architecture and building height will be consistent with the surrounding single-family homes. The developer has demonstrated that the project includes various amenities to meet the general intent of the ordinance by taking advantage of the modern sign planning techniques, because the project will include amenities such as private and formal dining rooms, cafe, entertaining activity rooms, beauty salon, library, balconies, outdoor landscaping, and gardens for the The project is necessary to make reasonable use of the property because the property assisted living facility is a permitted use under the RPD zone and complies with all development standards set for the zone, such as setbacks, lock coverage, parking, height, and landscape requirements. The permit includes conditions which, in the opinion of the Planning Commission, are imposed to ensure compatibility or to, and/or to mitigate any adverse conditions involved with the use or intensity of development, both public and private, because the project provides adequate special standard conditions to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses. The project will provide an environment of stable, desirable character with adequate open space, light, air, pedestrian, and vehicle or circulation because the proposed assisted living facility complies with the development standards in the RPD zone, provides adequate building setbacks, open space, and safe vehicle or access to the site from Village of the Park Drive and Davenport Street. Furthermore, the proposed project is consistent with the general plan housing element, which encourages a range of housing types. The assisted living facility will provide housing opportunities for seniors. The proposed project is consistent with the community design element because it provides service that meet the physical, social, and cultural needs of the Camarillo population. The project is consistent with the Village of the Park specific plan because it fulfills a housing need for the City of Camarillo. Staff has reviewed the proposed assisted living facility for compliance with all applicable policies and regulations, and found that the design and layout of the proposed development are consistent with the general plan policies, Village of the Park specific plan, and the development standards set for in the zoning code. Staff therefore recommends the adoption of the resolution approving ND 2017-3, adopt the resolution approving the RPD 200, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and the action of the Planning Commission is final unless an appeal is to be filed within 10 days of the date of their action. Also, staff has reviewed four comment letters, including one from the Chamber of Commerce supporting the project. Copies of the letters were attached to the agenda report. And that concludes staff's presentation. Available for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff?
I have a couple, but I, Mr. Chairman, just before we get into the questions, just if we can get clarification, just for everyone in the audience and everyone watching, it kind of looked like the findings had already been determined because it said the findings of the Planning Commission. Just for clarification, those are the proposed findings that staff is asking us to adopt, so those actually are not findings as of this point in time. Is that correct, Carlos?
That's correct.
Thank you. And I have some other questions, but I'll let the rest of the commissioners go first.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that I had some questions to staff earlier, and the staff got back to me. The questions related to the source of the information analysis on the actual parking needs of these facilities, and also the number of visits of emergency vehicles, and the answer was it's a combination of information from consultants, the applicant, and also experience of the existing four facilities inside Camarillo, so that was the, those were the areas where the information was gathered, as in the parking, the emergency vehicle visits. I just have a couple of questions. There be, I'm sorry, is there going to be any need for any signalization at the intersection? Or I can't remember where there was a stop sign on the corner of Village of the Park Drive and Davenport or not?
By the way, we have our traffic engineer, which is Bill Gottes.
It always stops. Davenport and Village of the Park Drive is a main access to the school. It has adult crossing guards assisting before and after the normal class periods, and then they always stop as applicable 24 hours a day.
So no need for any signal if the project?
No, there's no signal planned there, and would not qualify for one.
Okay, okay, thank you. I had a question on the wall. I know there's a wall now on the west side of the property separating the single-family homes from this property, and there was reference to a wall in the write-up in the summary. I wasn't sure whether there was going to be another wall built, or whether the wall that was referred to is existing wall.
The wall is going to remain, but there was a condition of approval for the project. If the wall were to be less than six-foot high, then the developer will have to provide a six-foot-high wall along the westerly side of the property.
And how tall is the wall?
Currently, six-foot high.
Okay, so it meets the requirement then. Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to that wall along the westerly side, that six-foot height, is that four feet of block wall plus two feet of wrought iron or something like that, or is it just a solid six-foot wall?
The one on the westerly side is a solid wall.
Okay. That's all I have.
I just wondered if, is there, I know there was a traffic study done in the original EIR, but is that updated now that we know what the specific project is, or was, did you take a look at that and see if it still meets the requirements?
The original EIR for Village of the Park assumed there'd be a church on this site, a rather large one, 39,000 square feet. And what we did was we compared the traffic that was projected to be generated by a church and compared it with what this project would be generating. We also compared it with what would this site generate if it were developed with single-family dwelling units comparable to those in the surrounding area. In all cases, there's no significant impact on the surrounding street system as far as numbers go. I can rattle them off, or I don't know, was there supplemental with the report? Anyway, basically, this project would not impact the street system or the surrounding area in any way greater than what had been designed for the site.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions, Mr. Chairman. First, is
First is, and some of these I'm going to save for the applicant, I'm assuming the applicant will speak this evening, but as far as staff knows, the, there is a comment in our material, which I'm trying to find right now. It basically indicated that employees are not expected to drive to work, that more than likely they'll be dropped off. That was in one of the reports, I believe it was from Crane Transportation Group, so it should be on page, well, there's no page number on this, but on the letter from Crane Transportation Group. Where are we getting this, this kind of information from? We don't even know the staff. It's, you know, not all staff would be expected to drive to work. It's expected that many would be dropped off at work and others would ride share to and from work and others may use a combination of public transit. It seems like we're justifying, which in this case, we actually do have enough parking, but it seems like they're trying to justify less parking, assuming that an unknown staff members, which haven't even been hired yet, aren't going to drive to work. Is that an assumption they're trying to make?
So I think it'd be appropriate to ask the applicant that question.
Okay, I'll leave that one then for the applicant. And then as far as the point of view from the school, I didn't see, and I may have missed them, but I didn't see any depictions that show where the school site is in comparison to it. So let me try to just make sure I have this clear in my mind. The school is to the north facing of the property. Maybe you can find it. So.
Yes, that's correct.
But go to the next one, Carlos. I see this picture, but go to the actual picture of the site, the next one. So right here, the school then would be to the right of this depiction, correct? Okay. I just didn't see that in there, so I'm just trying to make sure I have this oriented. So most of the traffic that we're talking about is going to come off the main frontage road, but you said that there's also a entrance for fire and emergency personnel to the rear. Is it expected that?
This is only for emergency purposes. They only entrance that we have for the site is on the north side of Village of the Park Drive.
Right, but as far as emergency purposes, does that mean a normal standard nine-one-one car are we talking about only in case of like a fire or something where they need to access that part of the building?
That's correct. When there's a, when there's a fire or.
Okay, so that's not actually going to be generally an open conduit for emergency personnel. All traffic's going to go through the front here is what we're anticipating. Okay. And I think that's all I had for staff. I'll leave the rest for the applicant.
I just had one follow-up question is if the project got approved, I was concerned about the construction things or conditions that would limit the hours and construction equipment and that kind of traffic?
That's correct. We have a standard condition on the, for the project that, you know, there's a certain hours of working hours and according to what we have on the condition, they should not start before 7:00 AM.
Yeah, they're going to coordinate with the school drop-off. I'm not sure what time the school starts. Is that?
Yes, typically they would be on-site by 7:00 AM and could not start work until 7:00 AM. So usually they would beat that rush for the school drop-off.
Thank you.
There are no more questions of staff. I'd like to open it up for public testimony and if you have these blue slips, maybe I can show some of them. Thank you. You fill one of these out, I'd appreciate it. They all would appreciate it. And usually we have the people in favor of the project go first and I don't know if there's a requirement for that or not.
No, there isn't. I don't think people indicated on the speaker cards whether they're in support or opposition. So I believe the applicant's on top, so we could start with the applicant and then just go.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're going to start with the applicant right now.
Okay, that's Bill Madry. Good evening, Chair Lusk, members of the commission. My name is Bill Mayberry, Oakmont Senior Living. With me this evening, I have our design team and management team here, so hopefully we'll be able to answer any questions that you have this evening. Wow, this is magical, Carlos. Which, what do I do? Oh, oh, got it, okay. Thank you very much. So one of the things I just, it's a very well-written staff report. You covered a lot of the things that I was going to cover here, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through a lengthy presentation this evening, but I just wanted to let you know a little bit about Oakmont Senior Living. We're a family-owned company. We've been around since 94, actually produced senior living housing for a number of years prior to that. And so one of the things that separates us from a lot of the people in the industry is we actually are bringing our business to the city. We are the, we do the development ourselves. We're our own construction company. We do our own management and we retain the ownerships of the building. And we've pride, you know, we've always prided ourselves in giving our residents just the highest quality of service, you know, and we wish to bring our business here to Camarillo here certainly in the future. We've been working very closely with staff over the, over the last year on the plans that you've seen before you, that we think we've made a lot of really excellent changes. They've, a lot of input from staff and we're looking forward to having the opportunity here in town. Right here, I just wanted to show, here's the, the front entry. I know Carlos has gone through these before. I'll go through them fairly quickly. We have a decorative paving that goes all the way out into the street. One of our conditions is to have a maintenance agreement with the city to be able to allow us to do this. We think it's a lot more attractive and staffed too to actually come right off the street with a decorative paving into our, into our portico chair. This is from the view from fountain, as we talked before. We have a fire lane that'll be a grasscrete product of some sort there. It'll be all landscaped on either side and we will have bollards, decorative bollards that will block this off that will be accessible by the, by the fire department and only be accessed during a major event of some kind, whatever that may happen to be, fire, earthquake, whatever it may be. This is an access point for, for the fire department only. Here we show, we had talked about earlier on the Village of the Park Drive side and we did do a large redesign on the, on our trash enclosure area to bring that and attach that to the side of the building, create the ventilation just out off the front, get as far away from the neighbors as we could. And we also, I just kind of wanted to point out, we did do, we did do a wall here, if we can see this, and there's a wall that extends out quite a ways here for noise for deliveries, thank you, noise for deliveries and, and also, you know, just to kind of, kind of shield that, shield that area. And then we also have a wall that goes along which separates our, our back courtyard area and the pet part, and that's the four-foot tall wall with the wrought iron above. So it gives a, just a nice secure thing, but still keeps everything open. People can walk by and look off into the landscape area. We didn't want to have big walls all the way around the project. Again, this is the view from the, from the back. And here's the bird's eye view. The reason why I produced this, we just kind of give everybody a general idea of how it's going to sit on the site, also give the concept of how the landscaping works and how we'll drive and the entries and things. This is one of the things we don't really, nobody talks about too much. We're always talking about the outside of the building, so I just wanted to bring up this evening kind of what goes on the inside of the building. And one of the things that we, we do in all of our projects is that we always have town car transportation for our residents. We operate with kind of a, with a concierge-type service so that people can call down and arrange for, for the use of the vehicle, to be able to take to doctor's appointments, to other events, that sort of thing. It keeps our, our residents active within the community and keeps them also from, from driving very much. This is the, is a similar entry that we would have showing the staircase going to the second floor, our, our entry and our concierge area. This is one of the dining rooms in one of our projects. And then we have the outside dining that we try to do, and especially here in Southern California, it's always nice to be able to take the advantage of the outside dining. And so in the back section, we, we will have doors that open and our residents can actually utilize the outside dining area quite often. This is a typical private dine. We do private dining for our residents so they can have a birthday party, a group. If there's a, sometimes a lot of people have card groups and things that they're involved in and they'll come and have lunch here. We try to, want to keep things as, as residential feeling as we, as we can. This is just one of the living rooms in one of our, in one of the two-bedroom units. This is our theater. We started putting theaters in, in the projects a number of years ago and is unbelievably popular. We always have movie night every night. We tried, and we also have things where the residents can utilize this, where family can come and they can play family CDs and movies and things and kind of reserve this area. You know, we always have, you know, World Series and all the major events and things, you know, we can, we can do this in the theater. We have a massage care area here in, inside. We also have our wellness center. This is the hydro tub room, so when residents can't get, like to take a bath but can't, it's difficult in getting in and out, they can actually step into this very easily and close and have a private bath area here. Our wellness center. We always have a lot of fitness in our, involved in our communities and this is just a small shot of one of the fitness rooms. And of course, we have a reading room and that people can use for reading and cards and games, beauty salon. We have outside gardening with all raised beds so that residents continue to, can have small plots and continue to do some gardening, you know, on their own. And this is just a shot of, this is the Alzheimer's Association. We, we always get very actively involved in the community and our residents too and our caregivers, and this is a shot of a walk, a supportive walk for Alzheimer's. Here's the site plan that I know Carlos covered, you know, very closely, but one of the things that we did want to mention is that we do have the gardening area that you can see. We have a small orchard area. The walks are kind of designed that people can walk around. Thank you, Carlos. And then just below that, we have a pet park. We are pet-friendly, so we, we do have a pet park area for, for the animals and, and for our residents to enjoy. Now, that being said, I know that there was so much covered by staff that, you know, we're here this evening to answer any questions that you might have. We also have reviewed and worked with staff through all the conditions and we agree with complying with all the conditions that are put in front of us this evening. And so any questions that we might have, we're looking forward to doing our best to, to fit within the neighborhood. You know, our construction teams are our own, so even during construction time, we try to have neighborhood meetings and things so everyone knows who to contact during the construction part that can, can be, that can be difficult for residents anytime there's, there's a lot of construction going on in the neighborhood. We'd like to make sure that people are aware and have met and know who our superintendents are on-site. So with that, there's any questions you might have now or? Mr. Von Vod.
I have a, I have quite a few, maybe some of these will answer some of my colleagues as well. Thank you very much for being here this evening and giving us the opportunity to ask you some questions regarding the project. How many, and some of these may seem semi-trivial, but I did have some, some concerns from some residents. How many of the larger versus the smaller suites are we talking about in the, in the property? The thousand-foot versus the four or 500-square-foot?
Well, the majority of them are in the 500-square-foot range. We just have a handful of two-bedroom units.
So we're only talking like maybe 10 or so? Okay, so small, smaller amount, because it did seem like it was presented in a way like there's a lot more of them. That's why I'm trying to just make sure I get some clarification on it. As far as the elevators, do you know for the size, just from having an EMS background myself? So some of these questions are going to be geared towards that. Do you know if they're going to be putting in the large enough elevators where you can actually fit a full gurney in, you know, flat with a backboard or if they're just the standard emergency elevator?
As far as, as far as the elevators are concerned, we put in the size that are required by licensing, which should take a full gurney so that people can get access in and out of.
Okay. I've seen some.
We do have licensing requirements for those and, and the licensing is obviously over the years has gotten.
Right.
More, more in-depth.
I've just seen some facilities even in Ventura County that still have the smaller, they meet the requirement.
Yes.
But they don't necessarily make it easy for us to do our job. So that's why I'm checking on that.
Some of our early, early, early buildings way back when, yeah, it was difficult.
Yeah. As far as the employees not expected again to drive to work, is that something that just seems to be common amongst your family business?
Yeah, what we did, we employ Crane Transportation. Carolyn is here if you want a really in-depth answer to it, but we did, we've done a couple of studies at our own communities that we operate and we found, and this, these are some of the things that we found, that some people do ride their bicycle to work. We do find more people being, being dropped off kind of, you know, as a group or people coming to work as a, as a group. And this is something we found in our traffic studies of our own personal communities.
Okay.
Is this industry-wide, I, you know, I don't, I don't have that answer. I don't, I wouldn't know.
Yeah, I just, I seem to know, I know a lot of people around here that work and I mean, most of them drive. That's why when I saw that, I kind of edged back a little bit and said, I'm, I'm not sure if that's necessarily going to be true. Now, the traffic studies that we're doing, I'm assuming we're taking into account that everybody would be driving to work. Is that, that is?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not basing it off that statement. That was my concern. As far as the RN, well, the nursing service, is it going to be a licensed vocational nurse or registered nurse and is it 24/7 or is it just, you know, during eight to five hours? Because that obviously does have an impact also on the 911 system as far as their ability to assess patients and make that determination if they do need to activate the 911 system.
I can, I can answer the questions. I think I'm about 80% right, but Courtney's right here and she can tell.
Perfect.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Courtney Siegel. I'm Vice President of Operations. My capacity with Oakmont is overseeing all the day-to-day operations within our communities. And to answer that question, we will have one head nurse designation to be determined. It's based upon the right candidate for the position, so across our company, we do have some of those people as RNs, some as LVNs. In addition to that, we will be staffing 16 hours of additional nursing coverage, which is usually fulfilled by LVNs. And that's in addition to our head nurse within the community.
So it's not going to be total 24/7 coverage? So again, something happens in the middle of the night, they're not going to be able to be assessed. It's going to activate the 911 system?
We do have a process for assessing residents, but you are correct. It is not 24-hour nursing coverage.
Okay. And as far as the entrance for the EMS, I did see in your booklet that you do require staff to meet EMS at the door. Is that, that's still going to be a requirement at this facility?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the cars, let me just do one more on the cars, a question on that. And there was a question that was raised by an email that was sent in by one of the residents from the Village of the Park, and I thought it was a good question. Does your facility require the residents to give up their cars as a condition of residency or are they able to keep their cars? And if they are, how many of those are allowed to be there? Because that would definitely impact the parking on-site.
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult answer, but yes, they, we do not require them to not bring their cars, but we are licensed assisted living communities, so very, very few people will drive. Sometimes I think it's somewhere between around 5%, 6%. We may have a couple where one or the other may still drive or the other one needs more assistance than, than the other. So we generally will have, have to check with Courtney again, but we always have, you know, there's that handful of cars, but we do try to discourage that as much as we possibly can.
Okay, so that, there, it's fair to say though that that could have an impact as far as the parking on the facilities concerned, maybe a minimal, but it could have an impact.
I think it's, yeah, it's, it's kind of calculated into the parking requirements.
The one for every four beds requirement, okay. As far as your, your fall plan, I was happy to see that you do have a fall plan in place and I'm not sure if I, if you're going to be, needed to answer this one as well. My question is more towards, I guess, your memory care units. Some facilities that I've responded to in the past have a requirement that anybody who's in their memory care unit, they don't call the family in the middle of the night, they just automatically transport those patients out regardless of if there's any obvious signs of injury. Is that generally your company's position or do you generally try to assess the patients to make sure that there's actually a need to be sending them? Because it can have an impact on our local hospitals as well as on our EMS system and the availability of resources if we're just calling every time we find somebody that, you know, just rolled. you know, just rolled out of bed, or, you know, even if there's no sign of injury, or we're not including the family who didn't want them to go in the first place. So, what is your policy?
That's a great question, and the last part of your statement is very true. And because of our relationship with the families, we do consult with them. There are times where the emergency is such where there is no time to consult, but a part of our assessment process is communication with the responsible party in advance.
Good, okay. So, generally, your staff will know what the desires are of family in those situations, and if the family is, you know, generally don't take them unless they go unconscious, stop breathing, whatever it is, the staff will honor that decision of the family?
That is correct. And in addition to that, not just with our memory care residents, but all of our residents in the community have about eight pieces of medical documentation, family desires, family wishes, that sits on the back of all of the residents' closet doors. So, as a company, we've decided to take that step one, take it one step further as well.
Perfect, so it's actually inside the unit? That's, okay.
Exactly, for every resident at Oakmont.
That's great to hear. Okay. And I think that's the last medical one I had. As far as the fireplaces, are those gas fireplaces, or are those electric, or...
They're, they're, they're gas appliances.
They are gas appliances, okay. But they're screened in, so residents can't throw stuff in there and start nice little fires in there. They're glassed over.
They're glassed over, and they're also screened in because licensing requires that because glass can get hot.
Right. And I only ask because I've seen it, people who aren't the borderline of being in the memory care units, who like to put things in places they shouldn't be, haven't quite gotten that diagnosis that gets them into that area, who are still living in that part, so just safety-wise, making sure the rest of the residents are protected. And then, the last question I have is regard, for, for the applicant, is regarding the, the noise as it relates to the school for construction. We're saying that they're going to start construction potentially as early as 7:00 AM. There is going to be obviously some loud construction equipment that's going to be going on. Is there anything in place that's going to try to dampen those effects on the, the schools, and especially since, in such close proximity? You know, the kids are taking tests or whatever. I want to just make sure that we minimize that impact on them. No matter what we build, there's going to be noise, but making sure that we're going above and beyond being as close as we are to that school to eliminate the excess noise.
Yeah, there's noise studies that have been done, you know, that show the type of equipment that, that we use, and the quiet generators, and the special mufflers on the tractors, you know, the tired equip, you know, using tire equipment opposed to track layers, that type of thing during the, the rough grading part of it. Once that takes place, then we're back to pretty much, you know, standard equipment, a backhoe, a well, a well-muffled grade-all for, you know, for hauling equipment around the site, large tire grade-alls and things like that that are, you know, relatively quiet.
Now, are those things that could be done like in between, I don't know, maybe like 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM or whatever, so it minimizes the impact on the residents and the school? Or is that something that's just going to be going all day because of the nature of construction?
Yeah, the nature of construction, there's a couple of ways to look at it. Of course, we want to get in and, and build it as quickly as we can. Once we get it closed in, you know, the noise issues go away. So, after, and then, and there is no underground parking on this particular facility, so within four months, five months, right, you know, we'll have the whole thing all closed in, and then, things quiet way down. But as far as limiting when materials are moved on the site during the day, or when people can get sheet rock into a second-story window at a different times, it'd be extremely difficult, it'd be, it wouldn't be cost-effective, of course, you know, for us, and it would definitely draw out the, the length of time that we'd be on a noisy site.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Not at this time. Yes, thank you for coming and presenting your project. My question has to do with your anticipated timing or your timeframes. If the city gives you approval on this project, what do you anticipate in terms of the duration for the design and permitting phase, and then, the actual construction phase for this project?
Well, we're probably looking at about, we're, we're anticipating about three months to building permit or grading permit with, with building permit to follow, depending on how we work with staff that way. And then, once we actually hit the ground, it's to opening, we do that in about, on a project like this, it would be 12 to 13 months.
Okay, so possibly from this point forward, maybe a year and a half?
About, yeah, a little less than a year and a half if, if we can get our plans in quickly enough in for a plan check.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank you and your team for coming this evening. One question on the parking. In the write-up, we have a sampling of parking requirements for assisted care facilities in different cities in Camarillo. They're all less than they are here in Camarillo, and there are, some are even substantially less. If the project is approved, I'm sorry, that's not the right question. If the other projects you have in Camarillo, are they as well-parked, or, you know, the same, same ratio of parking to, to beds as what the proposal here is in Camarillo? And if so, have you experienced any parking issues in terms of lack of enough spaces during peak hours, or are the projects fairly well-parked?
No, our projects have been very well-parked. When we do run into some parking issues that we're going to put on an event, but what we do during event times is we contract with local valet parking companies. We find places to park cars and bring them in, because a couple of times a year, like for our grand opening, or a couple of times a year, we may have some events that, that will, that will, you know, be larger than our actual parking that we have on-site. So, we will, you know, we will arrange for parking off-site for those, and there are, you know, very few. But as far as parking in our other communities, we have a number of communities that have less parking than this. We have some that have a little bit more, but we really haven't experienced a parking problem.
Okay. And your other projects, are they in similar environments to what the proposal is here in the residential area? And if so, have you found that they're completely compatible with the, with your neighbors?
I think we have really good relationships, you know, with our neighbors. A number of our projects are not exactly like this, but we have a number of projects that are in residential areas, and we've done really well with them. We have a couple of projects in Sacramento. Carmichael comes to mind because it's, has homes all the way around it. San Antonio Heights in Upland, we're in a, right in the center of a community, kind of similar to this, where we took out a shopping center with homes all the way around it and then created our project there. And we've had a really good working relationship there without any kind of problems. So, there's a number of properties that we are either back up to or are part of residential. We try to do that in our site searches and things, to try to create a very residential feeling for, for our, for our community. We like to be located in, in these, in these types of sites and locations.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation here. The only question I have is we've had, as a family, we've had two different experiences with, I'm sorry. Mike?
It's on. It might be off underneath.
It's not on.
It's on here.
So, why put it on?
It's not on.
It's on. Let's see. I'm sorry, I can't get the...
Okay, I can hear you just fine.
I'll say it really loud.
Okay.
We've had a couple of experiences with, with care, elder care, with my mother and my wife's mother, and what I noticed is that visitation was spread out. There, there wasn't a big group coming in in one particular hour. They came in at different hours of the day, presenting, depending on their schedules and stuff. And so, I, with either home, I did not see a big problem with parking. And a lot of it was just street parking. It was one up in Ojai, for example. Is that kind of your experience, or...
Well, you know, our, over, over the years that we've been in the business, the parking demands and visiting hours have changed, and early on, our residents were coming in at a younger age, and we were, and we were trying to plan for more visitation for mothers after school to stop by and see mom or grandma, or coming home from work, seeing mom and dad. Now, we're finding our residents are coming in at a much older age, and we're finding that we have quite a large group of actually retired kids that are coming to, to visit their, to visit their parents. So, now, now it's even getting more spread out. So, you know, throughout the day, it can be anywhere from after breakfast to mid-morning, early afternoon, and then, maybe a couple of visitors, you know, in the early evening. But we're finding more and more of our visitor, visitors are more during the day.
Thank you very much. No other questions?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Alan Setti?
Now, you'll open the phone.
Oh, I'm, I'll open up the, this is the first real day I'm doing this. For citizen participation, and would you please state your name and...
Sure. Alan Setti with EJM Development, the owners of the property, and I've been involved with this property for 23 years now, going through the specific plan. And I'm here to really support the project and to tell you that this particular site is zoned appropriately. It's either zoned, like they said, for synagogue, temple, church, private schools, that sort of a thing, and assisted living. I want to thank staff because they really did a great job putting this together and, and explaining things. But I'm really here, if you have any questions about the past history of the project, I'd be happy to, to answer those questions.
Thank you for offering. You have any questions about the past?
No. Very good. I just had one. Is it just this plot of land, or is it...